Welcome everyone, it's six o'clock, I'll call the November the 24th, 2020 meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening we have Mr. Pastor Mike Ingo from the Draper Valley Pentecostal Holiness Church, supervisor invocation. Would rise and remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Welcome everyone, it's six o'clock, I'll call the November the 24th, 2020.
Mr. would've been fine. I thought you was taking up offer and I was watching close.
This is work.
Draper Valley Pentecostal Holiness Church.
Thank you guys for doing this. I really appreciate it.
Would rise and remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we come tonight in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. We come as a people of hope. And we thank you, Lord, that you have this opportunity right now during this season of thanks. Thank you guys for doing this. God, you've continued to bring us through somehow. So right now is, these interest meeting tonight, these positions they've been elected to and appointed for by you, we just pray now you just help them, give them the wisdom and the knowledge, courage and those things all that they need to make the decisions they have to make for your people in your county. Father bless your families. We give you the thanks for everything you do for us. It's all because of what you did for us on the cross, Jesus. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
First item on the agenda is Citizens Time, we have two people signed up. The first one is Ms. Lynn Myers.
You never let us ask questions about other things on the agenda. I'm a trail user and advocate and I work with a lot of local trail people and I have two questions for Mr. Sweeney.
First item on the agenda is Citizens Time, we have two people signed up. The first one is Ms. Lynn Myers. There he is, I'm sorry. I'm sure Mr. Sweeney would be more than happy to either give you the answers here after the meeting. Is that all you have? Next is Mr. Jack Weaver. Wesley Highway Retreat of Genie 24368. I'm sorry. I'm sure Mr. Sweeney would be more than happy to either give you the answers here.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak on my annual speech each year about water.
Next is Mr. Jack Weaver.
The water situation is still the same where we are. And as I talked to, I had a good conversation with Tim Bitch again this week. He says, you know, he says, we're dumping. Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak on my annual speech each year about water. I said, well, look, we had a fire right our way, a house burned down, which I could throw a rock from my house about hit. And it burned down, we watched it burn down because there was no water. And the fire department says, well, we kept carrying truckloads of water in, but we just could not carry it fast enough that the fire beat us. And Tim says, you know, he says, we can give you all this water, don't cost town anything. All they've got to say is yes. And it burned down, we watched it burn down because there was no water. So I'm here tonight asking you to say yes. The fire department says, well, we kept carrying. It's not going to affect the county, I know that you want to sell water to Smith County, but chances of that happening is going to be very remote at best. Because one, they have a good deal with Marion. So I'm here tonight asking you to say yes. And I don't think you can be competitive. And if you do, you're going to have to acquire a lot more company. More chances of that happening is going to be, be able to pump it there. So all you're going to do is just, you're going to be in a further deficit than what you are now with that water situation. Because one, they have a good deal with Marion. And here, the town could sell the water to have excess. And we would have water to use. And if you're buying, wins happily. So I'm here tonight to ask you to say yes. To allow us to, the town retreat run the water out there. I don't, I mean, if I could see anywhere, you'd be, you'd be losing. I'd be the first sale of porches. But you just don't see a wind in this situation. There is, and this is something I've probably spent 15 years on. I mean, if you know, I've been talking about this thing for probably two decades almost. About to meet, and of course, my, what I was feeling is, it'd be wonderful to have water from Roanoke to Bristol because one day, there's going to be a water. And you're going to have water problems in these communities and they don't have a backup source where they can pump from. And to me, it's, water is very, very important, but nobody seems to listen to my story. Any questions? Thank you very much for the opportunity. Brian, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Barrett, and Mr. Weaver's never here when I ask you.
Water is very, very important, but nobody seems to listen to my story. Any questions?
There was a study.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
I assume still in progress because we haven't got a report back. Mr. Barrett?
Yes, we, in fact, Mr. Chris, and I met with the new county administrator, and I believe the engineer of Smith County. Been the last couple of months ago over studying Mr. Barrett.
I assume still in progress because we haven't got a report back.
We've been looking at what we've discussed. We are trying to accomplish, new county administrator, water out there. They are, Smith County has overseen that P E R. They have been the last time when they're finished that study, so then we will have a P E R for a water line in Smith County into With County. What potential of Smith County got any water out there? But the whole goal is to have a P E R for what would take the line through there and also. We're looking at running down, finish that study, fabric lane, up Campbell Land and all those areas. That is, it is all in the study. I will just leave a note here to follow up. But the whole of the county engineering firm, what would take, see if we can get an update there and also.
And will you, when you send that out, will you send out the exact date that we started this discussion? Because it's been going on so long, I can't even remember. And at this point, it's. And will you, when you send that out, will you send out the exact dates that we started this discussion? Because it's been going on so long, I can't even remember. At this point, it's. Well, well, here's the thing, is I have to see it for myself. I can't go by what somebody done 18 years ago. And we have, since I've been on the board, we've never had a formal request for the town to retreat to do what, what's your request? Which would be logically, I would think, the first step. Well, well, here's the thing, is I have to see. I mean, if they're inter, I don't know.
And I would comment, just, and don't disagree, I'm not disagreeing with you. There have been lots of studies, what they're doing now is preliminary engineering report, not just a study. This is a, an engineering report to go through and look at the size of line, quantity of line, the number of customers, all those things, not just a study.
I mean, if they're inter, I don't know.
And I would comment, just, and don't disagree, I'm not disagreeing with you. There have been lots of studies, what they're doing now is preliminary engineering report, not just a study. This is a, an engineering report to go through and look at the size of line, quantity of line, the number of customers, all those things, not just a study of feasibility.
And like I said, to me, that would be the logical first step. I mean, I know that you've been invested in it, but, I mean, and I've had discussions, but I've never seen a formal request. You know, that, you know, just like up here, you've got to have four people. And like I said, to me, that would be the logical first step. I mean, I know that you've been invested in it, but thank you, Jack. And I've had discussions. That's all we had signed up for Citizens Time, you know. You know, just like up here, you've got to have four people.
Three days later, you've cut it off again.
Sir, sir, if you want to speak, can you give us your name for the record?
Walter Dunford.
Okay, thank you, Jack. That's all we had signed up for Citizens Time?
You can keep it on for three days. Cut more water off, it automatically cut it off again. Three days later, you stand on the one that hasn't lost.
Sir, if you, sir, if you want to speak.
I'll look into each other, I know you were trying to get it cut on for some maintenance work is what you're doing.
What happened was, I'll explain it to you. They forbid me to go in the house, I dicted, the tenant magically cut it off.
Dave Dean.
And then the court won't let you go into the house.
I'll look into each other, I know you were trying to get it cut on for some maintenance work is what you're doing.
It goes in there, it promptly dropped it. They forbid me to go in the house without water.
Dave Dean. Mr. Dunford, if you put your phone number on there, I will give you a call tomorrow and have staff work with you and understand the situation.
Very well.
Last understood.
You'll have to get it. Rhonda keeps telling me every time I go over there.
I've got it, I can get it from staff. Well, Mr. Dunford, if you put your phone number on there, I will give you a call tomorrow and have staff work with you and understand the situation.
Here and then I'll close Citizens Time, move on in the agenda. You'll have to give them.
I'll say why you can.
And then I'll close Citizens Time, move on in the agenda. What road are you talking about? Smith Road.
Why would then you do all the gravel up there because it was private? And you can't even haul a couple loads of gravel up there and you may as pretty as half miles when it ain't here. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel.
What road are you talking about?
What I'm going to do is plaster a full page ad and explain all this to the With County. And you can't even haul a couple loads of gravel.
What road are you talking about?
And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul a couple loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel. And you can't even haul two loads of gravel.
Well, I can just tell you what, well, I'm just going to tell you, it's, it's never been the board's policy to spread gravel on private roadways.
I understand that. But you spread it all the way down. It's only three lakes. That's a private road, there's only two people live down there.
Well, I can just tell you what, what road is that? I'm just going to tell you, it's, never one road is that policy to spread gravel on private roadways.
It's state maintained, honestly.
It's state maintained.
No, these are limited, I think.
At the very end, it's not.
What road is that?
I must commend you doing great real estate and just paying a million dollars.
Yeah, it's state maintained.
It's, sir, you're out of order. Citizens closed, time has been closed.
At the very end, it's not.
One more time and I'll have you escorted out.
I'm going in now.
Chief Daphne.
Make my beats. You're all beat here now.
Sir, you're out of order. Citizens closed, time has been closed.
I just told you. I'm sick and tired of this.
Moving on, next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Chief Daphne?
I'm going to motion to pay them.
Have a motion to pay the invoices.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Is there any invoice that any board member wants to pull out or discuss? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Have a motion to pay the invoices. Second. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting for November the 12th, 2020.
Make it motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Smith. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? So approved. Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting for November the 12th, 2020. Have a motion, have a second. Sorry, you were gone last time. Any addition? Next item is old business. Mr. Barrett, do we have anything under old business?
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything under old business, but I would like to just take a moment, I don't know if he'll be here the entire meeting or not, I don't know if you all admit. Mr. Josh Dunford is our new IT technician that's working for us, he's here in case we have some computer problems over here.
Next item is old business.
He's been working hard on our F T R systems, I just wanted to let y'all meet a new county employee. Not have anything under old business, but I would like to just take a moment, I don't know if he'll be here the entire meeting.
Anything else under old business?
Mr. Josh Dunford is our new IT technician that's working for us, he's here in case we have some computer problems over here. Before you step up here, would you mind if I let Mr. Sam Sweeney go before you tonight? Let y'all meet a new county employee.
Okay. Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Sweeney's coming up here, just so you all remembered, meeting a couple, maybe a month or so ago, we had talks about the New River and the dam. Before you step up here, would you mind if I let Mr. Sam Sweeney go? And I asked Mr. Sweeney if he could come here and talk a little bit about the New River Trail's input into that process and then just also give y'all an update and answer any questions. Thanks for coming, Mr. Sweeney.
Appreciate the invitation.
Maybe a month or so ago, we had talked about the New River and the dam. I asked Mr. Sweeney if he could come here and talk a little bit about the New River Trail's input into that process and then just also give y'all an update and answer any questions y'all have about the trail.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Sweeney. They have been working. Their A E P, as y'all know, has asked Wildlife to continue their license. Formerly known as Game and Fisheries, D C R, Division State Parks, I believe, and a number of other organizations interested in terms of the area there. Studies, everything submitted. They have been working, we've been meeting with them, looking at the different areas that people are accessing in the formerly known as Game and Fisheries, D C R. And they recently hit a meeting there on Wednesday, October the 28th, that we attended in a number of other organizations, looking at what people are wanting from the access points up and down, whether it's the trail, the river itself. We've been meeting with them, looking at the different areas, and they're trying to do just recreational studies, fish studies and stuff in order to help create an avenue or area for people to come and recreate. And again, that's ongoing and continue to ongoing, continuing into the future. But at this point, that's kind of where we are. We're advocating like within things, access to fishing on the river where we can. And then just recreation in terms of biking and hiking or riding horses along the trail in general. But if anybody has questions about the park free license and stuff in general, I can try to answer what we know so far. Access to fishing on the river where we can.
Are you looking at adding access points?
And then just recreation in terms of biking and hiking or riding.
You know, that's one thing we've heard from people, you know, kayaking over, you know, the past five years is, you know, taking all.
We did acquire property there, the Ivanhoe Access, it used to be Mr. King's property, Frank King. At one time, years ago, there was a conversation, I think, with previous park manager, Hubison, and Mr. King about the idea that where the little creek comes in, ended river there. Acquire property there between our horse trailer parking lot and our passenger park parking lot. That there could be a place for like. At one time, years ago, there was a conversation, I think, car type manager, Hubison. Of course, since then, Game and Fisheries has put one there beside. But we do have property there now, that's right along the edge of the river. It could be something in the future, I guess, that could be done. That is the desire of a car type launch. We just finished our master plan review here this past year. And at that time. But we do have property there now, that's right along the edge of the river. It could be something in the future, I guess.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The, the property that they developed up near, in between Buck and Billsby.
Correct, U S Forest Service.
Is there any plans to ever do anything with that property?
All right. We met with U S Forest Service.
I have a question.
Two years ago, looking to see if we could do at least like a lease program similar to what we have with the Corps of Engineers.
Is there any plans to ever do anything with that property?
On South Side, uh, doing like basically a 99 year lease agreement. They were wanting us to do more like a 20 or 30 years, but looking to see in terms of the investment, to re, get the water system there at the old campground back up to speed, clear out all of the campground, fix everything back up, you know. Doing like basically a 99 year lease. Hundred, $200,000 easy to get everything back up to speed. And we want a longer period of time to recoup any expenditures like that. Just like a 20 year agreement. That conversation is still ongoing. I know from Carroll County's perspective, we've been working with Rick's Hill Supervisor there, because that's part of his county district. And he's been interested in even going to the legislatures, in terms of the Senate and still local reps, to see if they could get involved, maybe make it happen. The issue we get into in some cases, we wanted to do a land swap with some land that Henry Mother State Park has there on the county of Smith and Blan County, that the A T runs through. There is a restriction to hunting. That kind of goes against what the U S Forest Service wants, and so they won't necessarily take some properties like that. With some land that Henry Mother State Park has there on the county of Smith and Blan County. Originally, when the U Park was operating. What kind of came to the point where it stopped was the liability issue between the feds and state, there was not a hunting side of things. So you could never get an agreement on it. And so when the state would sign the lease agreement again, originally when the U Park was operating, you know, shut it down. What kind of came to the point where it stopped was the liability issue between the feds and state.
I have a question on the access, Brian was asking about it. Between the two dams, there's boat access below the upper dam. I can't keep on.
Billsby's the first one, as you come in.
Is there another access on that same side of the river? Down?
Right below the dam, there's a portage access.
Between the two dams.
To gain access in right below the dam. When we were meeting in terms of this, one of the issues that they have, you remember, back in 2010, they moved, I guess, because of the mitigation and stuff, and created little wetlands there above Billsby Dam. You used to come out to gain access in right below the dam. When we were meeting in terms of this, one of the issues that you have, you remember, back in 2010, they changed that, now you come through the yellow gates right there at the Buck Dam right above it. And then if you want portage, you have to go around. They are looking at trying to change something, maybe even putting a boardwalk was one of the discussions that we had there on October 28th. And if you tried to come out there now, you just can't do that. You know, there's too much mud, too much sediment that is built up there, and then if you want portage out. And it's just, they are looking at trying to change something, maybe even putting a boardwalk was one of the things that they were looking at.
That's what I was wondering, because I know if you put in below the upper dam and go down the river, I didn't think there was a place. I mean, you've got the road that goes all the way down to the other dam, so you can go down there to pick up your cag, but there's no place to get out.
Well, I know on the, you know, on the Buck Hydro, you know, you go down to Buck Hydro itself, and then you have to carry it down below the tail race.
I mean, you've got the road that goes all the way down to the other dam. So you could go down there to pick up your cag.
Well, the way they have it, the portage is on the tail race side. But one of the things that Bill Kethrow with the Department of Wildlife Resources stated that they would be interested in, maybe in an agency with A E P since A E P owns the land. Across the river from the trail. The number of people who access that side of the river on Foulish Ferry used to be. They had talked about maybe creating, stated that they would be interested in maybe in an A E P, since A E P owns the land. Offered that up to the A E P and the river people there, that they would be willing to maybe look at that as an option to create another boat ramp, at least gain access between the dams for people to fish. They had talked about maybe creating on the other side, Carroll County side on that side, and be willing, they at least offered that up to the A E P. Now, I did forward, I think, to Stephen some information and stuff. I did bring some of the latest meetings and stuff, and if y'all want, I thought I'd leave that with y'all, and if any of the group would like to read some of these, I can also forward that. But with the federal, now, I did forward, there is a website that you can go on. For Billsby and Buck Dam, you can look at all the information and the applications and things that have been submitted. Some of these reports should also be there as well, but if somebody has questions or needs something, I do try to download and keep them, and try to send those to Stephen. You can disseminate those to y'all if y'all. For Billsby and Buck Dam, you can look at all the information and the applications and things that have been submitted.
Do you have any more questions for Mr. Sweeney?
Some of these reports should also be there as well.
Ms. Myers?
Yeah, I just have a question about e-bikes. There's been a lot of, for allowing and so on, what's the status and what's cooking with that?
Well, General Assembly and the Governor signed off and approved Level 1 and Level 2 throughout the state.
Ms. Myers?
We used to allow them to be Level 1, but July 1, 2020, we started allowing E1 and E2.
I'm sorry, Ms. Myers, what were you asking about? Okay.
Yeah, you know, where they have Level 1, 2, and 3, we allow Level 1 and Level 2, but we don't allow Level 3. And that's just, part of that is the speed, Level 3, it'll do like 28 miles an hour.
How do they interact? I'm sorry, Ms. Myers, what were you asking about? Okay. Yeah, well, I assumed that's what you were asking, I didn't, I honestly have never heard of an e-bike, so.
Well, they're growing with, like with a lot of things, this baby boomer generation is aging and retiring, they're starting to see more and more of that group utilizing the e-bikes.
Yeah, well, I assumed that's what you were asking, I didn't, I honestly have never heard of an e-bike.
Some of them, like a Level 1, pedal, it's kind of like a 50/50 match. So instead of having to spend 100% of the energy to get it to run at a certain speed, you'll do 50% of it. And for some folks, it gives them that ability to, you know, do a few miles on a bicycle assist. If they had to do it all by themselves, they might only do a mile. Pedal, and so we're starting to see the growth in that. So here, especially in this past year.
They are technically still bicycles, is what they are. But they've got electric boost with them, so it's not just an electric scooter, if you will.
The Level 2 actually has a throttle mechanism where you can actually just kind of almost get any other type of moped or anything else, kind of crank it up and it'll take off. But Level 1 and Level 2 bikes typically are like up to 20 miles an hour. But the Level 3 can do 28. And right now, it's. The Level 2 actually has a throttle mechanism where you can actually run it down the trail at high rates of speed. Especially on weekends, that could be a problem. Rank it up and it'll take off. But Level 1 and Level 2 bikes typically are like up to 20 miles an hour, but the Level 3 can do 28. And right now, it's one reason why we don't allow that. Especially on weekends, that could be a problem. We have recently just did a Rails to Trail Committee meeting, and one of the things we were looking at was trying to at least put out that we were doing E1 and E2 bikes. We're also just started, we're, have a friends group that we've started. And one of the things that we would like to do with the friends group is create like an ambassador's group. Where you would come out and set up in different areas and educate the public again about common trail curricies, especially between user groups. We're also just started, we have a friends group that we've started. But we can, you know, we have the yield signs at each of the access points. So that if you come out, whether it's Austin, Bill, Foster Falls, et cetera, there's always a sign that kind of tells you who you should yield to in order for people to try to practice that, but in this day and age, but we can, you know, we have the yield signs at each of the access points.
Are you working with the New River Bike Association?
Whether it's Austin, Bill, Foster Falls, et cetera, there's always a sign that kind of tells you who you should yield to in order for the people to try to practice that, but in this day and age.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Sweeney?
I guess, Mr. Sweeney, the only thing I would ask, obviously, we've had some citizens that have come and just ask us to make certain we're involved with us. We've shared the information on the recreational survey out there. One citizen talked about, you know, one of their proposals was, you know, did it make a difference? And I don't have any idea of the hydraulics of it. They opened up a spillway on Saturdays to provide more water going down there. And I know that's all dependent upon the level of recreational survey out there. But is there anything county board wise, is there anything we can do or that we can assist you all in doing with this process? Or any concerns coming from A E P in this process, if there's anything that we can assist with?
I mean, county can always make their comments, recommendations or.
County board wise, or anything we can do or that we can assist you all in doing with County board-wise, or anything we can do or that we can assist you all in doing with this process? Or there's certain things the county would like to see? AEP in this process, if there's anything we can assist with?
Maybe another access or a boat ramp access. County can always make their comments, recommendations, even though it may be on the Carroll County side at this point. I mean, that's always options and. And they will take that into advisement as part of the whole process, if there's certain things the county would like to see. In the future, if there's something, like if you're talking about maybe another access or a boat ramp access. We could easily start the processes through. But now, again, they've just changed us from master plan reviews once every five now, once every 10. And like I say, we have just completed the last, you know, one this past year. But again, that could be one of those recommendations we can send up that with county would like to look at. The lady we met, we had the other day, our district manager Sharon Buchanan. We could send that kind of information up to her. Just let the management office know one of them this past year. But again, that could be one of those recommendations we can send up.
Yeah, I think another access point on the King property would be good for that area.
Lady we met, the other day, our district manager Sharon Buchanan. We can send that kind of information up to her. It's all right. Well, Steve, still, one of the things that we had talked about is I would give a little quick update, and then I'll get out everybody's harrison since I'm taking so much time.
Some of the park projects that we are still working on and doing, of course, a lot of y'all know, the hotel is under renovation.
Prices Builder out of Rocky Mount, Virginia is our contractor. They are hoping to have it completed by July 2021. At this point in time, some of the park projects that we are still working on and doing. But we are hoping that in the upcoming General Assembly, that might be something that is funded. We have a building bond project that is ongoing. They are hoping to have it completed by July 20. To start working on some of the bridges and trusses up and down the trail that need to be repaired. And we're hopeful with the money that we were given to at least get maybe a dozen of the bridges that are in the worst shape. Project that is ongoing, of course, what will happen during that time, we will shut down that section of the trail while the construction company is working on the bridge. So those will be notices that we'll put out on the website as well as our access points up and down the trail. So user groups will be able to realize that a certain section of the trail will be closed at that time. We have started a friends group, and we encourage people who are interested in becoming friends to contact the office. Like I say, we've just had a meeting in October to kind of kick it off and get started. And we're looking to probably have another one maybe in January 2021 to continue those processes. We have started a friends group. We have been developing and working on a museum to tell the history, not only of the mining, but also the natural history of our area. In addition to just the people in the places of the area and the trail services. And we're working on trying to develop the exhibits right now where we would put that in. We have been developing and working on a museum. The other thing we have been working on, or we've been working with Pulaski County on, is an extension of the trail to double in the places in the area and the trail services. And it is a multi-phase project. The first phase is being worked on with inland construction out of Abington. And they are working to surface the trail as we speak in that section in the first mile, mile and a half. So hopefully, in the upcoming years, it will eventually work from Pulaski over to double. Now, one of the things that we have been attending and looking at is Valley to Valley Trail Initiative. And they are working, everybody is aware of that. Surface the trail as we speak in that section. This is a plan between all the different municipalities, counties, between basically Abington and Roanoke to try to tie together the different trails. Systems that we have in order for somebody to come in at Abington, ride the Creeper Trail, get on the Virginia Highlands Horse Trail. This is a land between all the New River Trail into Pulaski. Pulaski is in the process of trying to create a trail to try to tie it together to the New River Bridge there that crosses over from Pulaski or Fairlawn into Radford. Get on the Virginia Highlands Horse Trail, come over to Buck Dam. From Huckleberry, they're hoping to go from Blacksburg, Christiansburg down the mountain to Salem to connect in with Roanoke Valley. And they're hoping in the next 20 years to try to get a lot of this work said and done. And of course, one part of that will be, New River Trail's role is part of that to network. Our attendance is continuing, as I was talking to Debbie Farson back here. We're seeing growth this year. We have already passed last year's total of 650,000 in attendance. And we're figuring that somewhere between about 725,000 will be our attendance this year. Our attendance is continuing as well as the weather. That makes us the third most visited Virginia State Park in Virginia, behind Pocahontas, which is number one, and Richmond. And then First Land State Park, which is down out of. So a unique place in terms of our park and the ability to draw people in from all over. One of the last things, we are working with some of the different counties, such as like the city of Galax, to maybe look at a new conveyor system. Their voluntary furniture plant in order to create small businesses or maybe overnight facilities and stuff for people to come in and utilize. So working on a lot of different groups, a lot of different organizations, and we're hoping to continue that in each of the different counties and towns and city of Galax that we serve. But we've got a lot of different things going on, and hopefully that'll continue into the future. For people to come in and utilize. So working a lot of different groups, a lot of different organizations. And we're hopeful to continue that in each of the different counties and towns and city of Galax that we serve. But we've got a lot of different things going on, and hopefully that'll continue into the future.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Swinney?
Like I say, that's something that they are looking at.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Swinney? Thank you, sir. And if you would, just keep us updated with Mr. Bear.
Will do. Anytime you'd like an update, just let me know. Thank you for the invitation.
Ms. Quinn? Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Swinney? Thank you, sir. And if you would, just keep us updated with Mr. Bear.
Will do. Anytime you'd like an update, just let me know.
Well, hello.
Thank you for the invitation.
Ms. Quinn?
It's been an interesting month since I was here last, so we'll start out with some of the higher points and move to other stuff. Okay. Your financial report was included in your board packet for this month, for the month of October. As you will see on the second page, the consolidated account contained a balance of $58 million, $59,525. And the general fund for October month end as well had a balance of $33,278,400. The consolidated account contained a. For October, that would have included, I'm going to say very few days of tax collections. And you will see those numbers change drastically when you receive your November reports and December going forward. Anyone have any questions on the financial side of? For October, that would have included. Few items are higher than normal, others are lower. Things are just kind of fluctuating. So we're just kind of along for the ride at the moment right now. See how some things balance out going forward. Especially with the pandemic-related items with Mills Tax Lodging Tax. Those things are very dependent upon, not just us, but our travelers as well. Along for the ride at the moment right now. See how some things balance out going forward. Especially with the pandemic-related items. You have a look like you're storing something for the day.
Well, it's in the middle of tax season. Nobody wants to stress you out. We're afraid to make you laugh.
I stress everybody in this room out. Okay, well, speaking of taxes, it's been interesting. You have a look like you're storing something.
Well, it's in the middle of tax season. Nobody wants to stress you out.
Or is it about the same?
We're afraid to make you laugh.
Phone calls, people coming in. I stress everybody in this room out. Okay, well, speaking of taxes. I'm going to say not all that busy compared to what we can be, and there's days that. Been interesting, we talk about every day trying to judge is the mail heavier? Or is it about the same? Phone calls, people coming in. Mail-wise, we are very much behind. Up here every year telling you all this, but normally I'm also telling you that I'm. Down one full-time person, thankfully this year, the first time in 30 years. I guess, I'm fully staffed, so five full-time, including myself in the office. Mail-wise, we are very much behind. She's kind of helping do odds and ends things. Sort through the mail, pull the items that are not tax payments so that we can make sure we stay on top of those payments as well. Just yesterday, we finally started working the mail that was postmarked early November. So that gives you an idea of where we're at. As you're aware, our office will close tomorrow at noon. We are closed Thursday, Friday, Thanksgiving. So that adds another two and a half days that we're behind, and our wonderful mailman will come in on Monday and bring us three days worth of mail. So we're trying to get through it as quickly as we can, but we do have to process the mail the same as a person coming in in person to pay their taxes. So my goal is to be finished with all mail by Friday, December the 18th, the absolute latest. I want to be wrapped up before the week of Christmas. I'm actually hoping to be sooner than that. But thanks to the IT staff, we've been able to pay their taxes. So my goal is to be finished with all mail by Friday, December the 18th, the absolute latest. Working the phones and processing payments. So the one station ends up being a phone and mail station. Because it's, as I mentioned, a back office, there's no public access. But we're, I feel like in better shape this year. Those things are a little strange and different. We're still trying to find our way. So we can now have all five of us working the phones and processing payments. Payment options, of course, like I mentioned, people are still coming in. They can pay over the phone, they can pay online. And we do have a payment box that's located beside the Circuit Court Building. I feel like in better shape this year. Those things are a little strange and different. We're still trying to find our way. I'll be putting out information on Facebook for over the next week because this year our due date is December the 7th. Because the 5th falls on a Saturday, so the due date rolls for the next business day, which is Monday, the 7th. So starting, Monday, November the 30th, through Friday, December the 4th, our office will be open 8:30 to 6 each day. We will be open Saturday, December the 5th from 8:30 to 12 noon. And again, Monday, December 7th, we're open 8:30 to 6. So in an effort to try to offer a little more convenient hours closer to the due date because we all like to keep our money as long as we possibly can. So we've had a former county administrator prior to Mr. Bayer that he would walk in the door at 5 o'clock on the due date. So Mr. Bayer's been trained better, but other folks do like to come in right at the last minute. Let's see, what else do I have? As far as collections, I haven't, I didn't write any numbers for where we are today with our 2020 collections, just because we are so far behind on the mail. So at the next December meeting that I'm at, we should be completely through mail. Where we stand as of that point in time on our collections, just on the 2020 billion of what we collected today. As far as collections, I haven't, I don't write any numbers for where we are today with our 2020 collections, just because we are so far behind on mail. So at the next December meeting that I'm at, we should be completely through mail, and I can tell you where we stand as of that point in time. I haven't looked. But if you told me it's in the mail, I would assume you're right.
I was hoping you found somebody that wanted to pay it.
I think you usually come in, so I'm going to say no because I haven't seen you yet, at least as far as I know.
Well, speaking of the drop box, I put a little check in there for you for Thanksgiving.
Okay, you told me it was a bit after the check just left this afternoon.
It was on my way.
Okay, because I had a late lunch, so it was like after 4:30 then. I think you usually come in, so I'm going to say no. Going back to the mail, anyone contacts you?
Well, speaking of the drop box.
Checks haven't cleared. We're getting a lot of calls because checks haven't cleared. Just let folks know, you know, we're working as quickly as we can.
It's been after the check just left this afternoon.
It was on my way.
Okay, because I had a late lunch, so it was like after 4:30 then. Some folks, you know, we all have our phones. We check our bank accounts on or the computer. Some folks don't. They're still relying on paper statement. And the last ending date, the check hadn't cleared yet, though they had written it. But just having them call our office, we'd be glad to look to see if it's something we've already processed. Kind of a couple of other things, mentioned IT had helped set up a few things. Mr. Bayer had introduced Josh Dunford with the IT staff. Mr. Dunford's position is kind of like Mr. Hankins in his position. It's one that I feel like we've needed forever and a day. We're all fully aware we overworked Mr. Sellers. I would love to have had a full staff when he was here because I think, you know, it would have been great even at the time as well, and we wouldn't have had the limbo point. But I'm glad, as a board, that you all. It's kind of like Mr. Hankins in his position. It's one that I feel like we need forever and a day. More IT staff than just one person. Had to bug Josh a few times and work on a few things, and he's become one of my new best friends. I'm not sure how he feels about me, but that's how I work with him. One other thing, the employee hazard pay on behalf of my employees, and I'm sure every other county employee feels the same way. Thank you for, we're giving them that. My group, a lot of people say, well, you all were closed. You weren't open. We were closed about a month and a half, and we've been there. We're still there every day. People coming in. So I know not everybody agreed with the decision you made, but that's part of all of us being elected. Not everyone agrees with our decisions. So you have to make the best decision you can, but thank you on behalf of my employees. I do appreciate that for them. And we've been there. We're still there every day. People coming in.
Do you might have anything for Ms. Quinn?
I know not everybody agreed with the decision you made, but that's part of all of us being elected. Not everyone agrees with our decisions, so you have to make the best decision you can, but thank you on behalf of my employees. I do appreciate that for them. And that's all that I have. Right now, it's looking like there'll be, their due date's also the 5th. They're probably going to be closed up until almost that point. If not, just a little bit beyond that, another adjoining treasurer's office didn't entirely have the same issue. They didn't have to close down. But half of their staff had to quarantine for 14 days, and they all had to get tested, and they were able to, because of the number of employees they have. They were not all exposed to the employees. Didn't entirely have the same issue. They didn't have to close down. We're doing everything we can. We're washing our hands. We're running through hand sanitizer. Wendy with the cleaning staff and Tim as well. They're usually the ones at our office. They're keeping us well stocked and keeping our refillable pumps filled. So we're, we're doing everything we can. We're washing our hands. We're running through hand sanitizer. Wendy with the cleaning staff and Tim as well. They're usually the ones at our office. They're keeping us well stocked and keeping us.
Carried around for two weeks. Had nothing to do with COVID.
And you know where the drop box is, so that's a good thing.
It was the sun in my eyes, and I dropped the visor down, and they fell out. I thought, oh, yeah.
I found a set of keys in it one day, and nobody has yet to call. And I have no idea. I mean, it was just the keys in there that particular day. There were no envelopes to have known that, you know, belonged to whomever. It was just a set of keys. I have no idea.
I'll be the person.
I found a set of keys in it one day, and nobody has yet to call. No. Honestly, I thought I would. We have gotten a lot of calls because we were the ones that had the early voting. And right after Election Day, when there was the things going on. I have no idea. Our votes not showing up on the state website. You know, I know everybody's seen all that. We fielded a lot of calls. Honestly, I thought I would. We have gotten a lot of calls for the work we did for the registrar's office. Because a lot of people were calling, wanting to know what our hours were to vote. Prior to October 31st of an ending. Then after that, wanting to know why their vote wasn't showing yet because they had come in and voted in our building, in our office. And we should know why it wasn't showing up. I haven't sent Lennon a bill because I assumed I probably wouldn't get paid, so we're just going to let it wash. And after that, wanting to know why the vote wasn't showing yet.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you. You all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Have a happy Thanksgiving, too.
Building Grounds Committee met on November 17th, 2020, and makes the following recommendations. Closing the Crash Collection Centers on December 24th, 2020, to coincide with JPSA's holiday schedule.
You all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Coming from committee doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Met on November 17th, 2020, and makes the following recommendations. Closing the Crash Collection Centers on December 24th, 2020, to coincide with JPSA's holiday schedule. We would like the directing of the county attorney to draft an agreement with G and G Livestock for progressive park lease. Here now we'll do a roll call vote.
Coming from committee doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion? So approved. Here now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry.
We would like the directing of the county attorney to draft an agreement with G and G Livestock for progressive park lease.
Coming from. Also rejecting all bids received for the Apex Barn Restrooms due to being over budget and rebid this project next spring.
Roll call vote, Mr. Terry. Mr. Bayer, do you want to summarize that one?
Yeah, this is, the bathrooms were budgeted this year.
Also rejecting all bids received for the Apex Barn Restrooms due to being over budget and rebid this project next spring.
Mr. Bayer, do you want to summarize that one?
Budgets, the bathrooms were, the budgeting costs were very high right now, and they were to be alongside the Apex Authority Boundaries. Other than that, which is proceeding, we're rejecting all bids this time, low bidding, around 200, so.
Coming from committee doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion on that? You know, we'll do a roll call vote. Here now we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 There were, there were many discussions, um, on the lease negotiation with the Appalachian Regional Expo Center Authority, and, uh, the board would like, uh, the, uh, lease right up in front of the entire board. There were, there were many discussions, um, on the lease negotiation with the Appalachian Regional Expo Center Authority, and, uh, the board would like the, uh, lease right up in front of the entire board.
The copy of the full leases is in the board package, page two to ten of the lease.
Mr. Bayer, do you want to summarize that before we move forward?
Yeah, there's, um, there's a letter in your package, page fifty-nine of the board package, uh, request, um, is the main area that is, that's hit on, item number four, the copy of the full leases is in the board package. The, uh, through December thirty-first, fifty, uh, two thousand twenty, uh, the annual rent will be zero dollars in January, if you're looking at, uh, start two thousand twenty-one, um, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, item number four, annual rent of the one hundred and seventy, uh, through December thirty-first, fifty, uh, two thousand twenty. The Apex Authority, uh, the day point behind, uh, January, has not generated the funds in order to, uh, pay this, and are requesting, uh, that the board consider renegotiation of their lease, uh, two thousand, uh, as you are aware, uh, well, Apex Board, many of the board members are, are new members, and they have, uh, hard not generated the funds, uh, but unfortunately, uh, paying this, and then the situation, uh, their hands are really getting tied behind the back with what they've been able to do. It's fall, they were, uh, they had to host several events, small trails, private events, uh, but as of the latest, the government's latest, uh, uh, executive order, which, uh, they, they realized that, uh, they're basically not even, they've begun for the rest of this year, and they have to, uh, they're only privately shutting down operations for, but out of the latest, the government's latest, uh, their request, uh, is basically to, uh, we need to look at waiving, uh, leasing, uh, basically not even, they've asked the board the rest of this year, and they have to...
With that being said, I'll open the board for discussion.
So are we voting on waiving the lease payments or extending the lease?
Waiving, you can do it at any, uh, uh, my recommendation at this point in time, uh, would be to, uh, look at...
With that being said, I'll open the board for discussion.
I would recommend...
So are we voting on waiving the lease payments or extending the lease?
For the next two years. You can do it at any of, uh, one of these points. The reason then, we know they're going to go into first part of next year still under this COVID situation. Look at amending, how long it will take to do that, and at that point, we can look at either adding additional time to the end of the lease or plans to pay the structure in two thousand twenty-two. The reason then, we know they're going to be able to, first part of next year still under this COVID situation.
Do you think after two years they will be able to make that payment?
I think trying to make the whole three hundred and thirty-five thousand payments that zoom in twenty-four is going to be extremely difficult.
I mean, I know the current board and the folks that's over right now, they, I mean, they're doing the best they can with what was dealt this year. At the first of the year, they was, you could see a change in how things was going than the COVID, but, I don't know, I think, for my, I think it's just putting a mandate on it extending it out two years, that's my opinion, they're doing the best they can with what was dealt this year. I mean, there's six of them. At the first of the year, they was, you could see a change in how things was going.
To try to give them, I think it's going to have to be renegotiated in two years.
I think, for my, I think it's just putting a mandate on it extending it out two years. That's my opinion.
Be more than reach, or they can't reach, because they've not really, everything they tried to do at the start of the year, they've not been able to really put in. Try to push them, and, uh, I think it's going to have to be renegotiated in two years where they are, but I, I don't want to tell you what's, um, the, uh, can reach, or they can't reach, because they've not really, everything they tried to do in two thousand or eight years, they've not been able to put into fruition. Basically, the start of, uh, the agreement center had to do it eleventh day of October two thousand eighteen, basically, the first event was January, February, two thousand nineteen, somewhere in that, basically, they had two years of operation without, and then basically it's going to be two years without lease payments, and then three years, the agreement center has to be a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and then year five, January, February, two thousand nineteen, um, basically, they had two years of operation.
So those payments are being made right now by the county, correct?
Well, this is the lease payment that they're paying to us, so at least the profit is five thousand, uh, we are paying debt service payments, uh, on this building to, uh, I said, it's they go B and L.
So those payments are being made right now by the county, correct?
The county has been paying debt service payments on it since we borrowed money in, uh, probably two thousand sixteen, two thousand... We are paying debt service payments, two thousand sixteen, uh, on this building.
So if we decide not to extend the lease, what happens?
If you decide not to extend the lease, the county has, well, basically, debt service payments on it, they would go in default in January, not been able to pay the balance sixteen, and at that point in time, uh, you would, uh...
So if we decide not to extend the lease, what happens?
Go in, go in, okay, you're default, you have to pay the lease. Not to extend the lease, um, with your plan, hopefully, at that point in time, they would go in default in January, not been able to pay the...
Even if you extend this out currently, uh, with the vote for that, forward, if it's still not working out, you all still have full control of the property, you all still have full control over the authority board, what your plan, still have full control of saying if you want to dismiss the authority, if it's not working, you, even if you extend this out, currently...
If we do what?
On, on any point in time, regardless of any action, you all have full control of the property, you all have a point in that authority board, you all have full control of saying you all decide, if it's not working, check whatever you all want to do with the property.
If we do what?
Well, my opinion on that is, uh, they really haven't had a chance. Who in here knows what was going to happen? Nobody knows that.
Check whatever you all want to do with the property.
And I, I do think that they need a chance to keep, this is something I believe could be a great thing. They really haven't had a chance. But we've got to give it a... Who in here knows what was going to happen? I know we put money in it, but I don't think the right thing to do for us to, or leave it to somebody, or even tell it to somebody. This is something I believe could be a great thing, operate it, but we got to give it a, a start. I know we put money in it, but I don't think the right thing to do for us to...
We would take the operation, so the building over here, correct?
Or even sell it, somebody, I think.
Y'all, y'all decide what you want to do.
Keep it, operate it.
Or if they go in, or if you don't, change the terms, if they go in default on the lease, then you would say, okay...
Yeah, we would take the operation, building over here, correct?
Say, okay, you're default, you got the lease, get remedy, get remedy, then the lease, vacate the premises, they go in, then the county decides, change the terms, they go in, go operate it, then, then you would say, you can put in the funding, the budget, and personnel, turning calls, say, okay, you want to do it, you're default of the lease.
But we could, we could establish a committee that not only includes board members, but board supervisors' members, but citizens' members, some of the Apex Authority board members, but, but we could, if we could establish, oversee it, and oversee it, not only include board members, but board supervisors' members, but citizens' members, some of the Apex Authority members.
No, I was, I was just thinking, um, you know, I don't know that we could form any better team of people to oversee it than the authority that we have currently. I don't think that we've always had that in the past. It wasn't one person or another, it was just, you know, we didn't have a well-balanced authority like we do now, and I do agree that it's not perfect, but they really haven't had an opportunity.
Form any better team of people to oversee it than the authority that we have at the time.
So I really don't know the answer. I wish I could have seen what they could have done this year, but they didn't really have the chance to show us.
But they didn't have the chance to show us. We didn't have a well-balanced authority like we do now.
That's just, that's just my two cents.
And I do agree that it's not perfect, but they really haven't had an opportunity.
Kind of what you're...
So I really don't know the answer. I wish I could have seen what they could have done this year.
You know, with the shutdown...
But they didn't really have the chance to show us.
They were under county, we could have took, took two full-time employees.
That's just, that's just my two cents.
Well, and, and one thing, to work for the county, correct, Mr. Bayer, kind of what you're, piggybacking on what you're saying about this year, and, I mean, I guess where I'm at is, if we're funding a hundred percent... They were under county, we could have took, but we have no full-time employees. Now, we have the power to appoint the authority and dissolve the authority, but that's really messy, and that's, you know, um, I don't think, I mean, I guess where I'm at is, we're funding a hundred percent. Have total control over it, but we have no say what we're paying. Now, we have the power to... All the bills, we need, I mean, dissolve. We don't even have a vote on the authority, and sometimes things get messy, like Mr. Kenter was, you know, we, we sit up here, and we talked about putting electrical, and, you know, the county engineer goes down there and calls up the plan, and somehow that plan got changed. We don't even have a vote, and now we still don't have electrical, when now would have been the perfect time to put electrical on the floor while they've been shut down, you know, we, we sit here and we talk about putting electrical...
I'm not sure, everything that went into those discussions, but, you know, that's just one example, you know, I'll, I'll channel Mr. Hale, and now would have been the previous comments, sometimes it's hard to get a moving target, they've been shut down. Now, I wouldn't preface it, you know, I'm not sure.
Where's the debt service address, the payment of the dress, the debt service?
Um, it is, it's in our, um, budget.
Mr. Hale, previous comments, sometimes it's hard to get a moving target.
I don't remember the department code, but basically, it's, it's in one of the department codes, uh...
Does the Expo Center ever pay the debt service? Is the Expo Center ever scheduled to take over the debt service?
Well, basically, uh, what was proposed was leasing it to them, and their lease payments would be paid for a lot of your debt service.
Does the Expo Center ever pay the debt service? Is the Expo Center ever scheduled to take over the debt service?
In essence, it's a two-step procedure, at that point, the lease rate. What was proposed was leasing it to them, and their lease payments would be paid for a lot of your debt service. So, what this is like, we are proposing, uh, the payments to make. So, in essence, it's a two-step procedure. And it was discussed, uh, the lease rate, former county administrators, long before the lease, calculating over the money that was borrowed, the money that the comments that were made was, that was in, you had to earn on clear, almost a thousand dollars a day in order to pay the debt service. And it was discussed, uh, former county administrators, long before the lease, the money was borrowed, the money that the comments that were made was, you had to earn on clear, almost a thousand dollars a day in order to pay the debt service.
Anybody else?
And we've got two more meetings this year, you know, if there's any action, any recommendations, any discussions, any, many meetings, joint meetings, anything that you all would like to do, um, to try to address.
Anybody else?
I will say, I do not personally feel comfortable making a decision tonight. I did look at it in the board packet, and I studied it, but I wanted to have the conversations up here and see everyone else's points of views, because some, you know, this is a really big decision that, that we're all making, and then, you know...
I will say, I do not personally feel comfortable making the decision tonight.
Maybe, maybe a joint meeting?
I did look at it in the board packet, and I studied it, but I wanted to have the conversations up here and see everyone else's points of views, because some, you know, this is a really big decision that, that we're all making, and then, you know...
Before, I know no one likes extra meetings, but I don't know, maybe, maybe a joint meeting?
I would like the chance to talk to the, to the authority about it further, since it is such a big decision for our county. Or I can do that on my own if you all don't want to do the joint meeting. Like I said before, I know no one likes extra meetings, but I would like the chance to talk to the, to the authority about it further, since it is such a big decision for our county. Or I can do that on my own if you all don't want to do the joint meeting.
But you, if you want to look at, see how times, how hard times are, take, take a look at this right here. It, it ain't only hard for the Apex Center, it's hard for everybody.
If you take COVID out, if you take COVID off the table...
If you want to look at, see how times, how hard times are, take, take a look at this right here. It, it ain't only hard for the Apex Center, it's hard for everybody.
So what do you, what do you, what are you suggesting you do then? Just shut it down and let it sit there and do nothing?
No, you can't let it sit there and do nothing, you got, you got to run.
That would be my argument, but...
Yeah, and, and I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying.
What do you, what do you...
COVID's not the reason.
What are you suggesting you do?
It's not profitable.
Shut it down and let it sit there and do nothing?
It still has a long way to go, but, like Mr. Horny said, I mean, what are we going, we, what are we going to sell it for a million dollars? I mean, we can't, we've got to, we have got to come up with some type of...
And I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying.
It is time, it is time to come up with some type of plan.
COVID's not the reason, it's not profitable.
I just, I'm just not ready to vote on that because I need more information before making a decision. I mean, what are we going, we, what are we going to sell it for a million dollars? I mean, we can't, we've got to, we have got to come up with some type of, it is time, it is time to come up with some type of plan.
I make a motion that we table this.
I just, I'm just not ready to vote on that because I need more information before making a decision.
Do we, do we have, do we even need a motion to do that, Mr. Bayer? What's your pleasure?
Committee just recommended full board look at it.
I make a motion that we...
I mean, I think we just leave it there, it's on the table. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to take any action, just to table...
So to Ms. Lawson's point, do we want a joint meeting?
I think we just leave it there, it's on the table. Well, and, you know, like I said up here before, I think we've got a good board in place, and I think they, you know, they were making, they were making some good strides first.
So to Ms. Lawson's point, do we want a joint meeting?
You know, where I'm at is, well, the whole project has been, has never hit a mark. Like I said, you know, it, it first started off, it's supposed to be five and a half million dollars turnkey. They were making some good strides first, you know, where I'm at is... It wasn't, you know, wasn't built in time. The whole project was supposed to open next day, you know, it, it's never hit a mark that's been set for. Five and a half million dollars turnkey. So, I mean, I have the utmost, uh, faith that if any, if any group can make it happen, it's the group we've got in. But let's be honest, are we just setting up for more failure by extending it? So, I mean, are we going to be back in here in two years? I have the utmost, having the same discussion, faith that any group can make it happen, it's the group we've got in.
No, not agreeing.
But let's be honest, unless they want to, you know, unless y'all want to meet with them and say, hey, you know, let's fill up them gaming machines. I mean, are we going to be back in here in two years, you know, having the same discussion?
Yeah, I'm not saying...
So do you all just want to have a work session, just with our board, to discuss options, what the best option might be at this point?
Unless they want to, unless y'all want to meet with them and say, hey, you know, let's fill up them gaming machines.
I mean, that's fine with me, I don't know how everybody else feels, you know?
I'm fine with whatever, if I have a question for the, the Apex Authority, I'll just ask them, we don't have to do a joint meeting to discuss options, what the best option might be.
Because, I mean, I think we've seen the work, I mean, you know, that's, I, I don't think that's...
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, a question, you know, there's, it's a personal issue that I have agreed with, and I think some of them have agreed with.
I'm fine with whatever, if I have a question for the, the Apex Authority, I'll just ask them, we don't have to do a joint meeting. I'm fine with whatever, if I have a question for the, the Apex authority, I'll just ask them, we don't have to do a joint meeting.
That's why I'm saying, if we go forward, we're going to continue, I mean, pay the hundred percent bill, I think we need.
I, I don't think that's.
Yeah, that's fine.
A little more say in question operation and decisions versus.
It's personnel issues I have agreed with, and it will vote through whether we have to vote. You know, that's, that's, I don't think that's fair to them. If it's one decision they make and we don't agree with.
Pay the hundred percent bill, I think we need.
I, I think that's a little extreme, but this thing is so far in the hole that I think we're all need to have, will, will vote a seat at the table.
Yeah, I do too, and I think that would clear up a lot.
I don't think that's fair to them.
Dull confusion, whatever you want to put in there.
I think that's a little. But this thing is so far in the hole that I think we do need to have a seat at the table.
Yeah, I do too, and I think that would clear up a lot. Dull confusion, whatever you want to put in there.
What time are you looking at a work session?
I figured it has to be like the five, four, or later, if we're going to get out on time for it.
Five works, man.
Five is fine.
Are we talking about Wednesday or Thursday, I'm sorry?
I, I threw both out, so I'll, I'll leave.
What time are you looking at a work session?
Um, I can be flexible for either.
I'm good either name, five works, man.
Five is fine.
Are we talking about Wednesday or Thursday, I'm sorry?
Cold, I guess.
You wanted to do Wednesday in case we need to. Um, I can be flexible for either.
All right. Anything else from Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Coop?
That's all from Building and Grounds.
Next item on the agenda is Water Committee Record.
I got it, I just got to find it.
All right.
The Water Committee met on November seventeenth, twenty twenty and recommends accepting a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to the Southwest Virginia Regional Water Waste Water Construction Fund.
Next item on the agenda is Water Committee Record.
For the With County Water Skated Improvements and to amend and appropriate the same.
Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion on that?
Water Committee met on November seventeenth, twenty twenty and recommends accepting a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to the Southwest Virginia Regional Water Waste Water Construction Fund.
Here and now, do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
For the With County Water Skated Improvements and to amend and appropriate the same.
Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion on that? Anything else from Water Committee?
That was it.
Do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry, awful lot of paperwork. I was, I was, well, I'm scrolling down over here. Moving on to new business, we heard from Mr. Sweeney, uh, next is the consent calendar.
That was it.
Entertaining a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. I was, well, I'm scrolling down over here.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Moving on to new business, we heard from Mr. Sweeney. Here and now, do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
Uh, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Next item is CARES Act request, Mr. Berry, I'll turn it over. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Hankins, any questions or discussion?
Can I, Mr. Terry, a few items of, on his end, for my, I do have laid in front of you, maybe a summary sheet.
Here and now, do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
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 So, uh, with the item being approved.
Next item is CARES Act request, Mr. Berry, I'll turn it over.
If they were all approved, where our main balance would be. Like I do have my, some receipt, you ordered in the package, and we have a few other, uh, discussions to be held. First is the, uh, Tractor's Office, if there are the number of people coming in and, uh, anyway, would be cloth fabrics and vinyls.
Entertaining a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Ah.
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 So approved. Entertaining a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry. Entertaining a motion to approve.
Ah.
Have a motion, have a second.
Ah.
Any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
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 So approved. Entertaining a motion to approve. Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
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 Ah. Entertaining a motion to approve. So approved. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Ah.
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 So approved. Entertaining a motion to approve.
Next is DSS, personal protective question.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Entertaining a motion to approve.
So moved.
Here and now, do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Ah. Any questions or discussion? So approved. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
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 Yep.
Ah.
Entertaining a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
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 Yep.
Ah.
Entertaining a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
So.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Ah.
Yep.
Ah.
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 Entertaining a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
So.
Improving furniture in their common area.
Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Done our three thousand dollars there.
Ah.
Ah.
I have also received a request via email not being formed. Have not gotten the form yet to, to give to you. Uh, but Royal Retreat Rescue Squad has also, for a while, they have been working on trying to replace some of their furniture. They have several options, one of them is thirty-six hundred dollars, the other option is about three thousand dollars. My recommendation to you all would be to look at approving, um, their basically, uh, three thousand dollars.
Entertaining a motion to approve three thousand dollars for Lead Mines and three thousand for Retreat Rescue Squad. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
Entertaining a motion to approve three thousand dollars for Lead Mines and three thousand for. So approved.
The next ever request, Lead Mine Rescue Squad for.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
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 My recommendation would be.
So approved.
Hankins, the next ever question, Lead Mine Rescue Line, the person that I met earlier this week, uh, I mentioned last week, we are. We are looking at. All PPE that's leading for all departments, our departments and also what may be needed for our departments and Rescue Squad to find payment here. I do not recommend funding of this, because there's that.
So do we just need to?
All PPE that's leading for all departments, our departments and also what may be needed for our departments and Rescue Squad to find payment here.
Any discussion on that?
I do not recommend funding of this, because there's that.
What was your reason?
Well, what I would rather do is looking, using the money to buy PPE equipment, there's some reusable face masks that are out there that they may be able to use and be more beneficial. There's been a request from Royal Retreat for looking at time that suits them all, and using the process.
Any discussion on that?
Yep. What was your reason?
You know, we're, we're. At what I would rather do is looking, using the money to buy PPE equipment, there's some reusable face masks that are out there that they may be able to. It does give them uniforms, but I don't know that it's. Providing them anything that's personal protective equipment or anything like it, it's just buying.
Yeah, I think their concern right now is, is if they go on a call and they get something on they, they got to go home, they can't change clothes there, that's their concern.
It does give them uniforms.
They want something that would be there that they could change into.
Do they not have any uniforms now?
They have.
I think their concern right now is, is if they go on a call and they get something on they, they got to go home, they can't change clothes there, that's their concern. They want something that would be there that they could change into.
Cause I know, I've seen a lot of them, they all dress alike, so. Do they not have any uniforms now?
They have a, I mean, they're standing uniformed, their, their pants.
Any other questions or discussion?
I mean, cause I know I've, I've seen a lot of them, they all dress alike, so.
All right, moving on.
I would know Fire Department.
Any other question or discussion?
Has put in a request for a cascade system to fill in their senders from their air pack. They currently have a cascade system, but it is not, uh, it's not rated to fill their forty-five hundred PSI cylinders, from what I understand, it's filling in a lower level. I understand their request, uh, brings cylinders, but they do not see cascades, they're filling their sending air pack. They currently have a cascade system, but it is not, uh, it's not rated to fill their forty-five hundred PSI cylinders.
About. Any question or discussion on that?
I, I really don't know what to do, I guess so.
They, they've got an older cascade system, but they've got newer bottles and they can fill, they can fill the newer bottles up to a certain point, but not to their maximum capacity.
I really don't know what to do, I guess so.
I, I don't think it's. They, they've got an old cascade system, but they've got newer bottles.
Regular budget. Cause I don't want to go to prison.
They can fill the newer bottles up to a certain point, but not to their maximum capacity.
Baron's brand had like face masks, many more face masks. Those things, you're not checking face masks, the things are having more care.
Covered up the cares.
This just has something to fill your air bottles better than the system you currently have.
Cause I don't want to go to prison.
Okay, I just see.
But I think it's an issue we are going to have to address with them.
They must have had a need for it, or I don't see them asking for it. Can we bring this back up in a way to?
Yeah, we can, I think we want to definitely have to address it in an upcoming budget.
Okay, I just see.
But I think it's an issue we are going to have to try and upgrade it.
They must have had a need for it, or I don't see them asking for it.
He's not saying they don't need it, he's saying they don't think it, it don't fall within the guidelines of what we can use the money for.
Can we bring this back up in a way to?
I mean, the only place that it would save them is having to take the tanks. But I mean, they're still going to have to take the tanks and have them filled.
Okay.
The only thing I was thinking was if they had their own.
He's not saying they don't need it.
Pump, they wouldn't have to.
It don't fall.
That might would be more cares because they're not going somewhere else to be exposed.
I mean, the only place that it would save them is having to take the tanks.
System, I can't even remem- can't remember the name of the system where you fill there.
They're still going to have to take the tanks and have them filled.
The Cascades.
No, not the Cascades, it's just bottles. Pump's the one that's got the.
They wouldn't have, that might would be more cares because they're not going somewhere else to be exposed. But I don't know what a.
You know what I'm talking about.
I could have told you.
System, I can't even remem- can't remember the name of the system where you fill there.
I, I understand what.
No, not the Cascades.
And it's something we have to look at and try to figure out with the high pressure box.
Right.
Um, the last one in the board packet is a request from.
You know what I'm talking about.
TS for a vehicle with third row seating and a purchase of a washer dryer.
I, I understand what.
Combination model. And it's something we have to look at and try to figure out with the high pressure box.
Right.
I have a allowing one of your mold gear into a request from TS for a vehicle with third row seating. Obviously, they're going into situations where they're in the purchase of a washer dryer individual situation where the washer and dryer, uh, could certainly go as far as cleaning as their washing. Home temporarily or, you know, whatever situation is where they're going to go to wash the bad situations. The vehicle with third row seating does washer dryer, additional social distancing. Home temporarily or whatever. Think what's quoted is a, the vehicle with third row seating does additional social distancing. I fully support the washer dryer combo. The other is, I mean, it does provide some distancing, what they've got in the four-wheel drive, it's a case of, you're doing that. They do have a van currently that does allow some to do that, some like. I fully support the washer dryer combo.
Do they have a four-wheel drive that allows them to do that?
Four-wheel drive, if you're not.
Yeah, that does provide some distancing, I don't count them.
They do have a van currently.
I make a motion, we approve both.
Have a motion, have a second.
Do they have a four-wheel drive that allows them to do that?
Any questions or discussion?
Four-wheel drive, if you're not a four-wheel drive.
So, so can the, the vehicle, will it be delivered in the time?
It, it definitely confirmation, it has to be a state contract.
I make a motion, we approve both.
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion?
So, so can the, the vehicle, will it be delivered?
Any other questions, discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
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 Matt.
Ah.
Ah.
Anything else, Mr. Berry?
Yeah, let me go over a couple of items.
Any other questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Ah.
As I mentioned, the, uh.
Ah. Matt.
Staff is working with all fire departments and working.
Anything else, Mr. Berry?
Yeah, let me go over a couple of items here. What, what I would like to do is to put your chair off the mission. Go ahead and just authorize staff to order as needed, what's there for PPE equipment, that can be additional mask, it can be COVID suit, it can be gown. What I would like, shoe covering, the mission, all of those items, being reusable respirators, authorize staff, uh, to Lead Mines. Request PPE probably be in the process. Mask, COVID suit, UV lighting, used to wander, be shoe covering, the currently, all of those items, that would be still up there. Respirators, that was well arranged, I would think maybe we're looking at. But I would say time is tight, the PPE is one of the most important, we've had a big stockpile, and now at the end of this time, getting in what we can, make sure it lasts, if we do not get some additional air funding going into next year.
So you just need us to take action to?
Authorize staff to proceed with. But I would say time is tight, PPE is needed for all county departments, now at the end of, of the time.
Entertaining a motion. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Take action to.
Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Ah.
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 Entertaining a motion.
Uh, one more request has come in.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Opportunity for some additional funding to assist them.
Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.[1747.61] Hearing none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
They have not been able to provide the financial records yet, uh, in the process. Uh, one more request has come in, that pretty much is time, also the Westside Justice, not for the money for the additional funding to assist them. They have not been able to give the comparison reports through September this year, or September last year, October, whatever you like, just to get to that time.
Okay.
Uh, handed out in front of you, you all have already approved three hundred thousand dollars for the JIDA, and that round for grants. Uh, the invoice came in to me yesterday, requesting their payment. Uh, what I would like to do is request, uh, instead of waiting to December eighth, uh, as you can see on the number list of businesses on here, the JIDA will be going to get JDA, wish you all the best. I would request permission, the invoice, go ahead and pay this invoice tomorrow. Uh, what I would like to do is three hundred thousand dollars to JDA, and that way they can go ahead and start with it, nonetheless, of this processing payment.
So moved. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Go ahead and pay this invoice. Mr. Chatterby? Hey, Matt Cuthbert, would you mind adding in your motion as well, approving the additional, that way they, their additional request for their, uh, other list of processing payments to them.
So moved.
Okay.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Last thing, any questions or discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Uh. Aye.
Aye.
Uh.
Aye.
Uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Last pair of, for all those.
Yeah, I'll add that.
Any questions or discussion?
With the health department.
Hearing none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Minmo there asking you all to consider.
Aye.
Ask for a change of location.
Uh.
He had worked with the health department, they were concerned by the workroom, where they wanted to change the parts of the floor. Uh, Mr. Bowers worked very carefully with the health department. Bowers got quotes on everything, Minmo there, got everything lined up, and they got ready to go to point, uh, last week, uh, getting everything lined up. The health department, they were concerned, the health department talked on it and said, we can't get the IT people here from VDA, move all the computers, uh, they're not our IT computers, their computers. The contractor was actually going to move their furniture around from late before, but the health department had to pull all the computers. Uh, Bowers came back on it and said, they're coming, getting first next week, they're going to start laying VDA, move all the computers. The health department is saying, they can't do it, they're, they're their way. Uh, we, the sheriff's conference room was generally about the same size as that, it had a carpeted floor in it, with no area, they really had discussed, looked at for going every week, and our recommendation was to go ahead and relocate that project with the sheriff's, like conference room floor, so they got rid of their carpeted floor, and they got a plain floor, completely, and it's the same size as that. Ultimately, EFC location in the area that's not a area, public company. So, if that project was moved, the mayor and the district may have already made a call, like, oh, I'm asking you all to agree for reallocation of care funds from the health department to the sheriff's office, ultimately, EFC location in the area that's public company.
Entertain a motion to approve the funding, is it funding change, or?
Oh, just approve project from, uh, the nurses' workroom and the health department. Reallocation of care funds.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion? Entertain a motion to. Hearing none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Uh.
Yeah.
I'll stand.
I guess I'll abstain, too.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make that motion.
So approved, have a motion, have a second. Before, before we move on, Mr. Bowers, it is. Hearing none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Uh.
Are they going to make another request, or?
I guess I'll abstain, too.
Aye.
They're not going to currently make another request for CARES Act.
So approved. Before, before we move on, Mr. Bowers, it is.
There may be another request.
The health department. Are they going to make another request, or?
Medicare Act is approved, or, uh, next. They're not going to currently make another request for CARES Act. And the health department leases that property, so we're not putting forward any original requests to make the line of that building.
Lee's family goes up.
Mr. Vaught, I have one more thing on the CARES Act. I was sitting here reading the lead mines rescue squad, um, uniforms, and I would like to make a motion that we cover the polo shirts and the pants, because to me, that gives them what they would need to have the change of clothes. I have one thing on the CARES Act, I have to change. I was sitting here reading the lead mines rescue squad. Um, uniforms. I don't, I don't see the need for the boots. I would like to make a motion that we cover the polo shirts and pants. I don't want to say I don't see the need for the cold wear, because to me, that gives them what they would need to have the change of clothes. But I know that their actual uniform is the polo and the pants.
You're talking about the twenty-nine eighty-seven thirty and the thirty-seven eleven twenty-four?
I don't, I don't see the need for the boots, and knock off the boots and the cold weatherwear. Or, I, I don't want to say I don't see the need for the cold wear, but I know that their actual uniform is the polo and the pants.
You're talking about the twenty-nine eighty-seven thirty and the thirty-seven eleven twenty-four?
Yes. And knock off the boots and the cold weatherwear.
Sixty-six ninety-nine, ready to go.
What's that total?
I can do that real quick.
And how much do we have, uh, are we going to have left? Because here's the thing, Ms. Lawson, you, you need to realize that.
If we do it for one, we do it for all.
That's very true, and.
I realize that.
Then the fire department, so we can't do for one what we can't do for all. And how much do we have?
How much does that leave us then?
Or should we just bypass it? Because wait. Here's the thing, Ms. Lawson, I mean, I will assume they can.
If we do it for one, we do it for all. I realize that.
Wait until the next meeting.
Yeah, that, that's fine with me, I can withdraw my motion, and we can wait till the next meeting. I just didn't want to. How much does that leave us? Um.
Or should we just bypass it?
Completely do away with it, if there was an option that we could provide them a change of uniforms.
I mean, I would assume.
But I understand what you're saying, Mr. Vaught.
Order these uniforms pretty quickly.
We can look at what that would cost. Yeah, that, that's fine with me, I can withdraw my motion, and we can wait till the next meeting. And then make a decision from there. I just didn't want to there, um, completely do away with it, if there was an option that we could provide them a change of uniforms.
All right, well, you just get that information, Mr. Bear, and we'll look at it next time.
We can look at what that would cost.
Anything else on CARES Act?
For all of the agencies, and then make a decision from there.
Thanking members of the board, we received, uh, bids yesterday from, uh, two qualified bidders for extractors and dryers to clean fire department gear, uh, both clean and dry it. Those of you who have been around fire service know, you can't just throw these things in a washer and clean them, that doesn't meet NPA standards. Thanking members of the board, we received. Diminishes the life of your bunker gear. Two qualified bidders for extractors and dryers. Put out bids at your request, uh, when we originally did this request, we were expecting about ninety-four hundred dollars per set. Uh, the total cost came in at forty-two thousand four hundred, which is a savings over what you had expected. Uh, the problem is, when we first started talking about this, the lead time on the equipment was six weeks, which would have put us in the window to get it by the end of December, meeting CARES Act. We're now looking at ten weeks per set. We think that probably can get a total cost in at least like your approval to proceed with this, what you had expected.
You say you thought you could get it.
Problem is, when we first started talking about this.
We cannot.
They are calling for a ten week lead time to get it by the end of December, meeting CARES Act. They, like most industries, are having issues with. We think probably can get it. Uh, the large number of orders they've gotten for the CARES Act means that they're having a harder time getting in raw materials to be able to manufacture their products, so I don't think we're going to be able to do this. They are calling for a ten week. We seek your pleasure on how we should proceed. In January, uh, they, like most industries, are having issues with, uh, the, the large number of orders they've gotten for the CARES Act means that they're having a harder time getting in raw materials to be able to manufacture their products, so I don't think we're going to be able to do this, but, um, we, we seek your pleasure on how we should proceed.
So can we, I mean, I understand it's something that they need, I do understand that. So can we put it off until we see if there's a second round of CARES Act money?
Certainly could.
And then?
And we'll know to get the order in as early as we can, when, when that next funding starts, if it does.
I mean, I understand it's something that they need.
How long?
I do understand that. So can we put it off until we see if there's a second round of CARES Act money?
Certainly could.
And then?
And we'll know to get the order in as early as we can, when that next funding starts, if it does.
All right, um, any other questions or discussion on that?
Recommendation, Mr. Holter.
I think they're sixty days.
Do we need to take action, or just table?
I guess previous action was to approve this, uh, we made the motion for.
All right, um, any other questions, discussion?
I guess what I do is not proceed, like the recommendation, just to hold and model that money next year.
Do we need to take? Entertain a motion, not to proceed with the extractor and dryer bids.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Hearing none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion, not to proceed with.
Uh.
Aye.
Aye.
Extractor and dryer bids, so denied.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Anything else, Mr. Hankins? Hearing none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Anything else, Mr. Bear?
Aye.
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 Moving on to appointments, we've, so denied. Received a letter that, uh, Mr. Joe Bean. Anything else, Mr. Hankins? Rogers Community Services Board CARES Act expires on December thirty-first. I think he's served three consecutive three-year terms. Moving on to appointments. Per the Code of Virginia, he's not eligible for reappointment. Mr. Joe Bean. I did have several months ago. Services Board, Angeline expires on December thirty-first. Interested in serving. We didn't have any three-year term. And, per the Code of Virginia, he's not eligible for reappointment.
Ms. Ryan has contacted me, uh, she has.
I did have several months ago.
An individual, she would like to have that individual, one of these forms for us, just to look at and see.
I'll just be honest with you, I'm not a big fan of the director recommending people be on the board. Anybody else find that strange?
And the only thing I would say is, on her behalf, and the reason, uh, her recommendation was she tried to.
I'll just be honest with you, I'm not a big fan of the director recommending people be on the board. Anybody else? Diversity or not, I find it strange.
And the only thing I would say is.
I don't have a problem with them putting the name out there, but I mean, that doesn't mean we have to choose that name.
I will get with, uh, Ms. Lloyd and see if she's still interested in getting back. Diversity or not, I don't like that.
I don't have a problem with them.
Anything else?
Putting the name out there, but I mean, that doesn't mean we have to choose that name.
They're just a heads up.
I will get, uh, Ms. Lloyd, see if she's still interested.
Some of them are the committees that are board, chair appointed, other ones are not, and that just give you an opportunity to see that.
Anything else?
And the rest of the appointments that are on there, because they're just a heads up, and the places that are reviring us on December thirty-first, some of the committees.
Moving on to staff reports. We have a COVID nineteen update.
Uh, basically, the only thing on that is just so that you know as you are aware, uh, Mr. Hankins, uh, as well, didn't get the email, I think he's working with, uh, the health department on today, but.
Moving on to staff reports. We have a COVID nineteen update. Are they not sending out the information like they were?
We, we switched over from Darlene to me, uh, last week, and, and so that led to some confusion, and, uh, so they, they've got that rectified. I did get the list today, and I was working on it before the meeting, and I'll get an update once we're done.
Are they not?
They'd also allowed us to change methodology. We've been counting active cases as anybody who had. We, we switched over from Darlene to me. Had it diagnosed within the last thirty days, so confusion. Presuming thirty days. They've got that rectified, I did get the list today, and I was working on it before the meeting. Now they've changed that methodology to ten days, so our number of active cases is going to drop. Pretty significant counting active cases. When you see that number, it's not a miraculous healing, it's just a change in methodology. Diagnosis in the last thirty days.
That's, that's the way I felt it should be.
They, they were presuming thirty days.
Well, you're good, so you might get the credit.
Later, you're okay. Now they've changed that methodology to ten days, so our number of active cases is going to drop.
Might hit you down for revival.
Pretty significant. When you see that number, yeah, it's not a miraculous healing, it's just.
Anything else under?
Methodology.
That's the way I felt it should be.
County administrator report.
Q and A tonight, Mr. Chairman. First, uh.
Mr. Farley might, uh.
Combination of good news, bad news. Our four projects were approved, but they don't have the sharing application.
Anything else?
Bad news is, uh, VDA, because of their financial struggles they're under.
County administrator report.
Have recommended Q and A tonight, Mr. Chairman. First, uh.
FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six.
Combination of good news, bad news. Their four projects were approved, another sharing application. The bad news is.
All these roads are basically residential subdivisions of the owner.
Requested, they have approved, uh, for FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six.
Z-Dot wants us confirming that we need same application, those roads. I don't like it, but if we take the names off, it's probably hard, and even further out, some of these roads is back on.
Requested, uh. I have sent, I've about answered VDA, yes, one leads the road on there, uh, so the only way these residents will ever get these roads, brother.
I don't like it.
But if you're not liking the fact that they're saying, okay, all these, you have to be more responsible for all the inflationary costs over, over the next four years, I have sent, but I would rather have argued that out, which is later, VDA, over the next four years, and all. The only way, my recommendation is to go ahead and approve, I did not like the fact that they're sharing applications. Uh, with their laws and this, over, as they're reporting here, but I would rather have argued.
Entertain a motion to approve the.
My recommendation is to go ahead and approve.
Funding, or the revenue share projects as presented.
With their laws and this.
I'll make that motion.
Entertain a motion to. Have a motion, have a second. Funding.
I'll second.
Or the revenue share projects as presented.
So what was the reasoning, again, it's going to take four years?
Budget.
They're not spending any money now.
Have a motion, have a second.
I don't understand that.
I, I don't have a, a good answer.
Any questions or discussion?
So what was the reasoning, again, it's going to take four years?
Mr. Sweeney had budget earlier.
They're not spending any money now.
They got budget cuts.
I mean, that, that, I don't understand that. I mean, that, I don't understand that.
I don't have a state bank preparations for how they felt like the COVID impact. Tax revenue. State side, tax, Sweeney, all of your fuel and all of that. They got budget cuts. Not seen as much of that in cause of the last travel. I think it's just financial reasons. They have pushed it out. Hoping that it's been approved. If there's any way that we can come back and look them forward, VDOT will do something. It's, you know, the only other avenue was for the citizens to 100%. Today, ain't causing there.
Well, they can't afford to do that, I mean. You know, and they say that the fuel tax, I mean, look at the interstates, they're packed. So they're getting their money. And I'm sure they'll take our tax money at the end of the year. But we're not getting anything for here in Southwest Virginia. Which is, which is a joke in my opinion. They say that the fuel tax, I mean.
Mr. Spencer and I sat through the Virginia Transportation Construction Alliance Virtual Conference a couple of weeks ago. It was a two-day conference and.
But we're not getting anything for here in Southwest Virginia.
A lot of the state transportation officials were talking about this. They're pulling money out of future allocations. And what VDOT does is they set aside in pots until they're ready for construction. And so they're pulling money out of those pots. Putting them in the current two-day construction projects to keep that work going. But it is delaying a lot of other projects and other. Talking about this, they're pulling other ways to money out of future allocation. And what VDOT does is they set aside in pots until they're ready for construction. That's what they're doing. So they're pulling money out of the pots.
I don't agree that there's a budget shortage.
Construction projects to keep that work going. It is delaying a lot of other projects and other.
They're the ones that got to lay down the money.
Usually spend money like the revenue share.
I can lay down with a clear conscience, but.
There were very many of us that were impressed by that method.
I mean, we've been telling these people we're going to do something on the road, especially so Ryan Drive. I don't agree. I mean, if you went over there, you said you rode by, Steve. I mean, it's a disaster. I mean, that's the picture they want to paint. So, I mean, I know these other roads is just as important. Others, and then there's a clear conscience, but. Other roads that we're wanting to get on here, but. I mean, we've been telling these people we're going to do something on the road, especially so Ryan Drive. I mean, if you went over there, you said you rode by, Steve. It's a disaster. So, I mean, I know these other roads is just as important. Others, and then there's a.
I don't like it, but I'm actually pleased.
Other roads that we're wanting to get on here, but. Have to wait four years?
That's part of my question, like the applications that are doing this. Please, this, we can go ahead and put on books, we'd also go ahead and create the transportation. I'm actually thought of the seven-year time. I don't like it, but I'm actually pleased that we're approving funds.
So rather, we're just voting to keep them on the list. We're still going to argue to try to get it moved up. And I think to Mr. Smith's point, I think our, we need to reach out to our VACO region rep. And, you know, like.
So rather, we're just voting to keep them on the list. We're still going to argue to try to get it moved up.
And I think to Mr. Smith's point. There's no shortage of track controllers out there. We need to reach out to our VACO region rep. Fairfax can't have everything, we'd like to have all, we're tasting all these fuel taxes. Any other questions or discussion? Do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Yep. Aye.
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 Next item is.
Fairfax can't have everything, we'd like to have all. Any other questions or discussion? Do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
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 The JIDA and the VIDA. Hucker Penner, performance agreement is, they will be on the down 48 million projects, $50,000 in amount of expenditures. Create 26, 49, 40. I recommend that the board of firm disagreement has to form. There's a blank empty agreement for the number of jobs as of October 2020 to be inserted. And then a name and address for clock and pen applied to. Have rest of the board approve it. And authorize the county administrator to sign.
Entertain a motion to approve the performance agreement. Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion? Here now will do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 Entertain a motion to approve the performance agreement. And that motion was, did include authorize. Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion?
Also, with that, I recommend 465, refer to 200,000 to the JIDA. Processing the additional grant.
And that motion was, did include authorize.
Industrial Development Service Funds, the general fund, in for that amount.
I'll entertain that motion.
Don't move.
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion? Do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
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 I'll entertain that motion. Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion?
Next is the.
Do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Letter of prevention.
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to accept the grant award of $8,678. And do we need to do anything besides accept? Entertain that motion to accept.
Same way.
Have a motion, have a second. To accept the grant award. Any questions or discussion? $678. Do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 Y'all gonna have to wake up.
I was trying to find my page.
If it's a delayed second on accepting $8,600. Any questions or discussion? Do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Aye. Y'all gonna have to wake up.
I was trying to find my page.
If it's a delayed second on accepting $8,600.
Next is our annual agreement, memorandum of agreement.
Entertain that motion. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 Yeah.
Aye.
And the last thing, Mr. Chairman's list is.
Entertain that motion. Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Development Services on the comprehensive plan. Their plan was last developed in 2015, but I know you just review it every five years. Obviously, earlier discussions this year, warnings that we needed to be looking at solar farms. So this is the proposal point out to get firms to respond first next year for us to look at. Obviously, earlier discussions this year, warnings that we needed. We have huge, some of them Rogers, in the past, we have did talk to some of them Rogers. So, but I would like to put out proposals, see what we get back with proposals. Fun, some of these firms have the ability of in online survey, mail-in survey, just like we have. Having these firms assist in that process. So, not any action needed, but I would like to put out, see what we get. I would request that some of these firms have the ability, that the board just indicate that they recommend that the planning commission would have began a review of the comprehensive plan. Not any action needed, but I would request that.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Here now will do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Aye. Anything else, Mr. Berry?
Make that motion.
Mr. Terry.
I'll second.
Anything else, Mr. Terry?
Thank you. First off, if anyone. You may have known this, but just let everyone know, Scott had a death in the family, and so he's been gone past few days. And if you've tried to reach him and have been unable to, that's. What's going on with him? He's up in Maryland right now. First off, if anyone, and I just have one thing to report out. Just to let everyone know, Scott had. Lean on Mr. Manley, if I get any facts wrong, feel free to correct me. Past few days. But you guys remember the deal with Branch Botanicals? And they have received a tobacco region opportunity fund grant, which had they not been paid. I just have one thing to report out. With county could have been lied before. Lean on Mr. Manley, if I get any facts wrong, feel free to correct me. Ended up getting a lean on property. You guys remember the deal with Branch Botanicals? Branch Botanicals and Mr. Todd specifically. In any event, as we know, that deal at Progress Park has not gone through. Branch Botanicals has repaid that grant. With county is not on the hook for that, which is good news. That said, we do need to release the liens on that property. Branch Botanicals, Mr. Todd specifically. We need the board's authority. In any event, as we know, that. Allow the county attorney. Deal at Progress Park has gone through. Of that deed of trust. Has repaid that grant. And allow the county administrator to execute that release of that trust. Good news. That said, we do need to release the liens on that property. To do that, we need the board's authority to allow the county attorney to draft a release of that deed of trust. And allow the county administrator.
So you need a motion for that authorization?
Has land been returned to us?
The county attorney will be working on a letter, on a deed for that to happen, then we turn that to JIDA. That is separate issue from this one, but the same thing. They have indicated that they are.
So you need a motion for that authorization?
Has land been returned to us? Was this loan not tied to that somehow?
No, this was a deed of trust, part of the return of the issue. This was a deed of trust, separate issue. Again, his personal, they have indicated not a property in the court. For, only for the $200,000 back on this.
Was this loan not tied to that somehow?
This was a, this just releases the deed of trust, it's on his personal property for the $200,000.
As long as it doesn't mess up. As long as it doesn't give them a loophole to get out of the return to property.
Nope.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the county attorney to draft the deed. And then the county administrator to.
Execute.
Execute it.
As long as it doesn't mess up.
Motion, have a second.
As long as it doesn't give them a loophole to get out of the return to property.
Here now will do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to authorize the county attorney to draft the deed. And then the county administrator to.
That's all for me.
Second. Motion, have a second.
Say that is all, Mr. Murray? Yes, sir.
Here now will do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith. Supervisors' time, Mr. Smith.
A couple of things off of the same area. Max Metis Fire Department, they're still having issues with their pagers.
That's all for me.
Don't seem to be getting any resolve from Ms. Lane and her group. So, Mr. Berry, if you could work on that for us. Also, there seems to be an issue on the boundaries. A couple of things off of the same area. Max Metis Fire Department, they're still having issues with their pagers. Apparently, Max Metis received a call. Think it runs with Lane, it's off of 94 between Locks Cap and Walton Burns. I think that's it. Apparently, Ivanhoe's said an issue on the boundaries. Max Metis had already got there, it was on the way out. I think it was. Apparently, Max Metis received a call. Mr. Price. Lane had an issue with it. So we need to. We need to make sure that they know where the boundaries are at. Apparently, Ivanhoe's said this master's. Responded and Max Metis had already got there, it was on the way out. The other issue is dispatch rolling two units. And they only need one, so we're sending. We're doubling up on resources, they know where the boundaries are at. And I think that's happening. When they're going, and I get if they, you know, if Ivanhoe's not responding. On the western side of the Max Metis district and eastern side of the Withfield boundaries. They're rolling two units. They're rolling Withfield and Max Metis. And they, one or the other. We're doubling up on resources, which we don't need. And I think that's happening. It's on the interstates, right there, Dixie, Seven. It's on Pepsford, you're right through string. Max Metis district and eastern side of Withfield. Boundaries there, they are, they're rolling Withfield and Max Metis. One or the other. And apparently, when they, for their chief Brady or chief Haywood. It's on the interstate. Gets to the dispatcher, says hey, seven. Called the one off. There's a lot of arguing or confusion there.
Is Withfield self-dispatching?
Right. No, they're running them. They're sending them both. And apparently, when they.
My guess would be.
For their chief Brady or chief Haywood. Gets to the dispatcher and says, hey, call the one off. There's a lot of arguing or confusion.
Is Withfield self-dispatching?
No, they're running them, they're sending them both.
My guess would be on. Dual dispatching zone. The progress part, the self, the dual dispatch. So anything that happens there is supposed to dispatch Withfield.
So going back on the 94 deal, where's the line at? Where does the service area stop and start for the others?
I do not have that in my mind.
I mean, I've always thought it was Silo Church, but I'm thinking it's Felt Lane. So going back. Max Metis is thinking they go to Felt Lane, and Ivanhoe thinks they're coming back. The service area stop and start.
I'll get that. Typically, we don't divide one right on Felt Lane, most time it'll be south of Felt Lane.
I mean, I've always thought it was Silo Church. Right, I'm thinking it's Felt Lane. Right. Max Metis is thinking they go to Felt Lane, and Ivanhoe thinks they're coming back.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cook. The only thing I have is a rehash of the Water Committee meeting on the late fees. Had a gentleman that contacted me about late fees on the water bill. The water bill is due on the 15th. He went to the bank on the 6th. The only thing I have is a rehash of the Water Committee meeting. Check for the 7th on the. According to the water. People that they didn't get it till the 19th, so they hit him with a late fee on the water bill. The water bill was not having it in time, and it was definitely not his fault. He went to the bank on the 6th. Paid it on the 6th. The bank didn't get it turned in in time. Check the 7th. The bank says they did. And according to the water. The bank says they dropped the payments off on the 14th. Hit him with a late fee. People say they didn't get it till the 19th, so somewhere. Not having it in time. Definitely not his fault. Which really doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is. Didn't get it turned in in time. Our citizen paid his water bill on time through the bank. Bank says they dropped the payment off on the 14th. And if we accept postmark envelopes, we should also accept checks from a bank. Because the customer can't go back and back. There's a screw up there, bank. Really doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is. So I don't think our citizens should be penalized. For a bank mistake when they're paying it bill pay. Postmark envelopes. I don't know how many people here use bill pay. I don't write a check ever. Because the customer can't go back and back date a check at the bank. Like I said, I just don't think our citizens should be penalized for something that they in good faith tried to pay. For a bank mistake when they're paying it bill pay. I don't know how many people here use bill pay. I don't write a check ever. Everything I pay is.
They like to postmark on all the envelopes.
I said, I just don't think our citizens should be penalized for something that they in good faith tried to pay.
The issue with the bank thing, anytime they get it coming directly from the bank, or whether they're coming from third party provider. They're coming in envelopes with a stack of checks in them most of the time. Cause of the process, only bank you. They do not have issue a date stamp on the envelope. Staff cannot go back and say, yes, this is meant. Now, if it comes in on the 16th, we definitely know it's mailed on the 15th, so it's not an issue there. But when they come in, like this case, on the 17th, 19th, or whatever it is. There's not any date stamp on the envelope for them to reverse the charge. So it does make sense that, well, we could just go back. And that's what the. But when they come in, like, see how we can address bank checking, if they're written by a certain date, their bank checking coming in, they pay in the envelope. Then do we accept? It does make sense.
And I don't understand the argument. If we're going to look at an envelope, why can't we look at a bank check? They both have the date on them. It doesn't take any more effort to look at an envelope than it does look at a check. And it just. Why that's such a big deal, I just, I can't figure it out. See, and I don't understand the argument. If we're going to look at an envelope, why can't we look at a bank check? They both have the date on them. It doesn't take any more effort to look at an envelope than it does look at a check. Why that's such a big deal, I just, I can't figure it out.
November 10th, 12th, whatever. And then two checks were dated November 16th from a third party payer. So they were parrot him. They're dated, they have their dates late. But they all come in, in one envelope from the third party payer. They were checked with checks from November 10th to November 16th. So, well, whatever. That's where it gets challenging upfront, yes, they're dated November 10th, but obviously, the bank did not issue the check. They were parrot him. Until November 16th. They called that part of the envelope with two checks.
But why are we penalizing a citizen for that? That's my.
We've got a process. The help of citizens. We have always gone by postmark. To allow the citizens to do it.
Why are we penalizing a citizen for that?
We have never done it.
That's my.
We've got a process. Problem is, the bank does not have the postmark on it. So it did not fall within our policy. And when we get them with the. We have never. Times different dates on it. But they're all coming in mailed apparently on the 16th, they come in late on the 17th. late on the seventeenth, we are trying to, we're not trying to penalize citizens, but citizens need to be working with their bank and using bill pay to do it. We're trying to come up with a policy where, and it may be, on the bank checks that come in, we have to do it off of the date that they're, but they're all coming in mailed apparently on the sixteenth. Most of them require that it be processed by a bank process. We're not trying to penalize citizens, but citizens need to be...
Well, and, and, and I hear what Mr. Cook saying, you know, on the county side, but there's also the, you know...
On the bank checks that come in, we have to do it off of...
I, I use the bank as a service. I'm their customer. Yes. I'm sending the bill up here that needs to be up here at sixteenth. You know, there's some liability on the bank too, because they're not taking care of their customer, you know, and that's, I mean, I, I use the bank. At the end of the day, I'm just happy people paying their bills. But the thing about this, why should our staff take extra time when the banks actually not doing their job? Because you know what the banks doing, the banks wait until they get sixteen ounces worth of mail, so they can get their money's worth, they're first, or first class stand. But the thing about this, why should... They need to be... But that's why, that's why, if we're gonna look at an envelope, it takes no more effort to look at an envelope than it does to look at a check. That's my whole point. It's no more work. But if it's an envelope with sixteen checks in it, money's worth, that's... Okay, so you look at the sixteen checks. If they, if the customer mailed the debt, they got fifteen different checks, he's still looking at the envelope. I'm, I'm just saying, there's some, there's some liability on the bank's part too. I'm not arguing that, but it's no more work. But if the envelope with sixteen checks... The late charges.
Yeah, so, so in the world we live in now, we're...
If the customer mailed the debt, and you got fifteen different checks, he's still looking at the envelope. I'm, I'm just saying, there's some, there's some liability on the bank.
You know, and I'm, like Mr. Cook, I mean, if you're looking at an envelope that's postmarked, our check with a date, it's, I don't think the, the citizens would burden that, and I agree that the bank owns part of that as well. The county can't go back to the bank, of course, the customer can, the customer can run a loan, you know, and I'm, but most people's not gonna change banks. Looking at an envelope that's postmarked, our check with a date, it's, I don't think the, the citizens would burden that, and I agree that the bank owns part of that as well, but the county can't go back to the bank, and of course, the customer can, the customer can run a loan. But most people's not gonna change banks.
But we would get it on, like, the twenty, I think, issue, but it would be dated in the year fifteen. So, I'd like to, she would call every month, you know, we just receive this, and we're kind of starting with, uh, Bill, that's what Mr. Cook talked about, and even the state as well, taking files of the office and stuff. What I discovered, and I don't put the situation, because I don't use only a bill paper in my bank, but it would be dated, but my understanding was at the time, you put that on my bill page, and you have to, I guess, maybe send it to what date the bill was due, and what was happening, and she was using the bank account, and so she was putting in the bill was due on the fifteenth, but they were cutting the checks on the fifteenth, because a lot of localities will have a lot of electronic, and it's hard for them to automate bill pay from bank accounts versus what it does here, and when I was with towns, we didn't have that, we're getting those physical checks in, just like when we sit down right out of our checkbook, so she finally backed up her day, uploading her day, like, on, or something like that, but we started getting automatic files. It is an issue like us, as Stephen pointed out, those envelopes don't have a postmark on it, but I was helping work mail today, and I worked probably four envelopes, it was the same scenario. You may have ten checks in a, or six different days, you want those ten checks, and they're anywhere from the, well, what I was working today, some had October the twenty-eighth, and I had one that had November the, uh, it was November the eighth, so that's a broad range of dates, and I, I don't understand how the bank can pay that, it is a problem. And I think, uh, you know, it's...
And that was...
Some had October the twenty-eighth.
She was probably lying, that lady was me, because I used, I used it, I used it for about six months, and the town, and I had the same problems, I just, I started writing the check, because it was, to me, it wasn't worth a hassle, but, and that was, it, it was very frustrating. She was probably lying, that lady was me, because I used, I used it, I used it for about six months, and the town, and I had the same problems, I just, I started writing the check, because it was, to me, it wasn't worth a hassle.
You're working the same, the same way, whether the checks are in or out, whether the money's coming, you're getting on, if the bills are due, or they're getting a packet of checks in an envelope on the twentieth, if it comes in the fifteenth, you're still having to figure out, and it's like us with tax bill, people put twenty sixteen tax bill numbers on it, and you can't even find anything with that check right now, so you're, you're spending half your day trying to work with, you don't even get bill pay checks, or you're getting that, it's like a check, and that only is, uh, it's in both sides, it's a, it's that fine line, because you don't have that postmark, you have to tell Mr. Manley that you have to make sure your payment's postmarked by this year, December seventh, to make sure your payment's on time, or it comes in postmarked December the eighth, and he says, well, I wrote the check on November fifteenth, we can put anything on that check.
But the bank can't.
It's about when we mail it, right.
The bank doesn't.
And I mean, I don't know what date they put on there, so that would be, uh, this year, if you can interest anything, find out, make sure your payment's on, is it based on the date that, uh, that you entered in to pay it, or is it based on a date that you put in to pay by?
But the bank can't.
I, I don't know how that works, like I said.
The bank doesn't.
And I don't pay for that, so I'm not sure how that feature works, and all banks progress process on that currently, but is it based on the date that, is the, uh, that you entered in to pay it, or is it based...
I'm not disagreeing with what Mr. Cook's saying, we just got to amend our policy for what's now stated. It's not had a postmark date on there, it doesn't, so what we're doing, implementing the policy, many have come by, say, so we can make that change.
I want to make sure the policy gets changed.
I'm not disagreeing with it, but not at ease, we just got it done, need hands, you know, and I want to talk to say, banking as well, I'm assuming that we're doing, and I paid it October seventh, they taking the money out of my check on October seventh, since people paid on November ten.
I want to make sure the policy gets changed.
But, bank earning the interest on it, it's nothing, they hold it while they finally put it in the mail, and third party, and holding it up, mailing, and also earning as much as possible, and then, you know, additional burden on our staff. Citizens, they're all in and paying it on the seventh. Bank earning the interest on it from the sixth day.
Someone's earning interest, same reason people pay at the last minute for taxes.
Uh.
I have nothing else. Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. McRoberts?
I don't have one thing, I would like to see...
Someone's earning interest, same reason people pay at the last minute for taxes.
Let's make a little bit of progress on the building at Byron Spine. It looks like we've been spending our wheels for a year, we still ain't got anything down.
I have nothing else. Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. McRoberts?
I don't have one thing, I would like to see, let's make a little bit of progress on the building at Byron Spine.
Uh, two things.
Looks like we've been spending our wheels for a year.
The road is spewal. It's better than it was, but it's still some problems.
And I think we can do a little better.
And the second thing is, I need IT before he leaves. Me and my computer ain't getting along.
Mr. Hornish?
Uh, two things.
I'm sure...
The road is spewal. I'm sure it's operator error, but, you know, they get mad if I pull out the hammer. And the second thing is, I need IT before he leaves. Me and my computer ain't getting along.
I'm sure it's, uh...
I'm sure it's operator error, but, you know, they get mad if I pull out the hammer.
Mr. Terry?
The other thing I have, somebody then lady reached out to the issues, and I just thought I'd bring it forward, so, I think they need to do about it, maybe she's talking more. Her, uh, her next one member shot the children cat on the air, and he has nothing left done about it. The, um, the, 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 the,